All right, I call the Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, Osage County Commissioning to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. We have Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Cooter, and Harrison. And Tempest Harrison filling in for Michelle as, well, do you have official title? Are you like a deputy clerk? Les Holman said he would not be available by phone today. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Do you have anything, Brandon?
I do not. Is that executive session 30 minutes? Is that going to be?
I think that correctly request would be under security measures.
Okay, so it says 30 minutes attorney, legal counsel, but you'd like me to change that to security measures? Or a security measure is the topic?
Security measures is the exemption. I think if it's legal, then military parties can be present.
Okay, you'll just have, when I make my motion, I may need a little help technically. And then we need to make sure that she gets the right terminology. Okay.
Colings is still on for today, too?
As far as I know, I haven't heard any different. I'll need to check with Josh to see what time he's available on that. Or I don't know if she needs us or not. She may just be giving us information. Okay, I do not have anything to add. Tempest, do you have anything to add or to? Okay. So I would move to approve the agenda. As amended, we're going to change some of the wording for the executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. I'm going to.
I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, we have you on.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to skip down to the executive session. For that, you're just needing the two commissioners and Josh by phone?
Correct. Yes, please.
Okay.
And Kelsey and I.
Okay. I'm going to do my best to make this correct the first time, but I may not get through it properly.
Would you like the statute number?
Sure, if you'd like.
It's KSA 75-4319B12, I think, be the executive session request.
Okay, can you say that again?
Sure. 75-4319B is a void 12.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. So the exception is going to be that. Is the topic still computer systems?
Security measures, yes.
So the exemption is the KSA number?
The exemption is the KSA number and the exemption is titled security measures under the statute.
Jeez, title. Okay, I'm sorry that I'm. And does the, in addition, you probably said this, in addition to the exemption number you gave me, is there a title for that? Is there a name for that?
Yeah, it's called security measures.
Okay. Security measures, okay. And I'm sorry, I'm asking this again. And the topic, because I have to give the exemption and a topic. So I'm doing two things. Is the topic title security?
Yeah, I think.
Sorry.
Security would be the topic also, yes.
Okay. So I'm going to move that we go into executive session for a matter of 30 minutes with Kelsey Wensky, Judge Wine, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Cooter, and Josh and I by phone, returning at 9:35. For the exemption KS 75-4319B12, security measures with the topic of security.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Did you get that, Tempest? We need, we need to be kind.
All right, roll call. We have Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Cooter, and Harrison. And Tempest Harrison filling in for Michelle as, well, do you have official title? Are you like a deputy clerk? Les Holman said he would not be available by phone today. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Do you have anything, Brandon?
I do not. Is that executive session thirty minutes? Is that going to be?
I think the correction request would be under security measures.
Okay, so it says thirty minutes attorney, legal counsel, but you'd like me to change that to security measures? Or is security measures the topic?
Security measures is the exemption. I think if it's legal, then the other parties can be present.
Okay, you'll just have, when I make my motion, I may need a little help technically. And then we need to make sure that she gets the right terminology.
Colings is still on for today, too?
As far as I know. I haven't heard any different. I'll need to check with Josh to see what time he's available on that. Or, I don't know if she needs us or not. She may just be giving us information. Okay, I do not have anything to add. Tempest, do you have anything to add or to? So I would move to approve the agenda. As amended, we're going to change some of the wording for the executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right.
I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, we have you on.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to skip down to the executive session. For that, you're just needing the two commissioners and Josh by phone?
Correct. Yes, please.
Okay.
And Kelsey and I.
I'm going to do my best to make this correct the first time, but I may not get through it properly.
Would you like the statute number?
Sure, if you'd like.
It's KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B twelve, would I think be the executive session request.
Okay, can you say that again?
Sure. Seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B ZOY twelve.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. So the exception is going to be that. Is the topic still computer systems?
Security measures, yes.
So the exemption is the KSA number?
The exemption is the KSA number, and the exemption is titled security measures under the statute.
Geez, title. Okay, I'm sorry that I'm... And does the, in addition, you probably said this, in addition to the exemption number you gave me, is there a title for that? Is there a name for that?
Yeah, it's called security measures.
Security measures, okay. And the, I'm sorry I'm asking this again. And the topic, because I have to give the exemption and a topic, so I'm doing two things. Is the topic title security?
Yeah, I think.
Sorry.
Security would be the topic also, yes.
So I'm going to move that we go into executive session for a matter of thirty minutes with Kelsey Winsky, Judge Wine, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Cooter, and Josh and I by phone, returning at nine thirty-five. For the exemption KS seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B one-two, security measures with the topic of security.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Did you get that, Tempest? We need to, we need to be kind.
Okay, no action taken in executive session. Okay, any public comments?
Tricia Webb from Land Development, she's out of her new business, she did come in and request to be moved to next week.
Okay, so I need to delete that. So I'm gonna, I would move that we amend the agenda, remove Land Development, Tricia Webb, to, and then move to next week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion passed. Okay, if you would make that note. Alright, will you remove that? No public hearing. Is there any correspondence to commission for us?
Yeah.
No one finished business? Oh, we have new business? Champ Plan Larry Bigelow.
Actually, this is, this is a little different. Last time I was here, y'all approved getting the proposal. Then in my follow-up with Michelle, she informed me that everything was still ongoing, but she'd been placed on hold for that because of some budgetary stuff. And I was like, okay, great. I said, what's the holdup?
Well, I'll tell you, because I saw you on the, the agenda. If I remember right, one of the items was, we had moved to a new payroll system. And we have had issues with finishing the implementation.
Right.
So, we have engaged with a different payroll company.
Okay.
And I believe when we talked about this, at this point, we didn't want to add something that dealt with all these withholdings and all the intricacies while we're trying to move to a payroll system.
Okay.
That was kind of our hold. Now, there might, I don't remember if we talked about budgetary stuff, but it was because of us moving, we've, we've had some issues and to add this extra details of pulling money out, putting it back in, we thought might really complicate getting set up. That's kind of where we were at. So, but anyway, if you want to go through what you have.
With the information that I was given from her and the question she had, I said, okay, look, we, we told you, I told you back, back before ADP ever became a thing, that we could help with that, but we were, we never got the opportunity. And so, based on what she gave me, I said, okay, I'll, I'll show you what we can do.
Okay.
We have, we have a payroll company that we work with called Resource Edge. And just a few bullet points is, one of only 11 national ASOs administration services only that are IR certified for payroll and human resources. They're, they have exemplary policyholder customer service, it's two-way dialogue, not one-way monologue, as you find in a lot of places. You're still in the driver's seat as far as what you want and how you want, and they work. Their premium rate is $47 per employee. They will handle all aspects of payroll stewardship according to what Michelle asked from the backside. They work seamlessly with our plan. In other words, if they became the ASO, they would immediately, upon your directive, get the proposal, get the information to Champ, get the proposal back to you, and then if you all approved, get the coverage implemented. You know, in other words, it's not a whole lot more stuff for Michelle to have to do. And that you deal directly with them, it's not through us. But, as you all have seen in the past, I'll, I, I promised Michelle I will be as tenacious as I have to be and as little as I want if, if, if something comes up. In other words, we've had, we've had no problems with these people. They have been wonderful. And I am sorry that ADP turned out to be such a headache for you because they're one of our best clients and one of our best referral sources. And if somebody's happy with ADP, I never, ever try to challenge them. But if they're not, I'm going to come to their aid. I have a couple, just a couple of email correspondence, correspondence with Michelle, one from me, where I say to them, this is what I want the commissioners to understand, unless, got this, CC, that the plan costs $47 per employee, you save $47.80 with the Champ. Now, with a 91% national average participation rate, you can do the math and find out. All I can say is, it's going to cost a lot less with this program, with Champ, than what you're paying ADP at this point. And then on the back, and what I was asking on this was, if you could appoint someone to talk with Resource Edge and get a fit, if, that may, that may be a moot point at this point, I don't know. But like I said, when I was here last time and Michelle told me about the issues you were having with ADP, I said, Michelle, we can help you. We could have helped you before this. And she said, well, I need some questions answered. I said, put them down. And so, down below there, here's the question she had. Cost and what services are included? And it really depends, the typical price of $47, I have already verified that for what? Michelle said she wanted, that would be the price. But it can do more, but this is what she said you wanted. That it includes the time tracking, geomapping, mobile app, Ploppkin, and functionality, yes. Reports guaranteed and submitted by those forms, yes. Human resource platform and online reporting system, yes. And the other entities, that would be to talk with Brandon, who was the representative for that. And through Steve Wright, who we correspond with on Champ, I got his information there. He can get a, he can get a meeting set up immediately. It takes about 30 minutes to get this thing taken care of. So, that was, I'm here today on that, based on what Michelle told me. And is there, are you already, are you all working with somebody else?
Well, so just, it was last week, wasn't it?
Think so.
Last week, we just engaged with Pay, Paycor.
Paycor.
Well, there, yeah, I think Paycor is another one that supports us.
Yeah, yeah.
What we're worried about maybe is just the moving, you know, when you, part of the problem was, we might have been wrong from the get-go on some of our information that we uploaded in there. So, we're trying to really protect the onboarding process and try to make sure it's, as streamlined as possible.
Right. And, you know, and I, and Michelle kept telling me, I can't get you on, I can't get you on. I said, well, when can you? She said, the 12th. I said, put me on.
Well, what we'll do, we'll keep this information. Like I said, we're, we've engaged with Paycor and we're going to see how that goes. That's where we're at right now.
Alright, well, I will let, I will let them know with that, the people there, and I will let Michelle, now, I will check and see, but I'm, we, we work seamlessly, Champ works seamlessly with about all of the payroll companies. In fact, I think they're on our list. But, like I said, we have one that we work with specifically. And if things, that, that's what we wanted to do back before ADP ever became. So, but it'll be good to have that all in place, especially if come renewal time for your major med, you have Champ in place, in operation. And then if they, if they give you a hard time and you guys want to save significantly, we're here to help. We're not, we're not here trying to take it from them, but if they aren't going to take care of you, we will.
Okay, thank you.
If given the opportunity.
Very good.
Thank you. Alright. Jim Paul, O-SH County Fair Association. Come on forward.
Hello.
Oh, you can go ahead and come up here.
Oh.
That way.
We got, we got a microphone for you and everything.
It's much better that way people can hear, because we have.
Well, I, you know, Brandon, Brandon for a while, I'm Matt Leslie, I haven't met you Heather, so.
Nice to meet you.
Hello. So, I'm the events and entertainment coordinator for the fair, and I'm a member of the fair board in O-SH City. And I'm, I'm here really to ask you a few questions. I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. And then I also kind of just wanted to let you know where we're at. We are going into this next year, we're probably going to have our biggest and probably most attended fair that we've had in a while. I've been on the fair board for probably six years. And when I came on, one of the goals we had was to get a carnival and we did that. And so, for the last couple of years, we had the carnival. And this next year, both the 4-H fair and the carnival are going to be combined. So, we've got a lot more moving parts, a lot more things we need to do logistically and infrastructure-wise. And, you know, we need to figure out like the boundary lines of our, of our, our fair, like, fairgrounds, primarily for insurance purposes. So, since everything's getting bigger and there's more moving parts, we're going to have more vendors, we're going to have more people, we need to find out about parking, and there's just a lot of things that are going on. And that's something like right now, where that's what I'm working on to try to get that all straightened out before we actually start planning the events of the fair. So, my question is for you, or my question is, I, we can't find anything in our records, and I don't know if there's actually any records here, that actually tell like what, what our responsibilities and our duties are as a fair board, and also like what our authority is. You know, we're dealing with contracts with vendors and we're working with insurance here and insurance there. And, you know, I'm, in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, like what if this happens, what if this happens? And I don't know if there's anything that's actually like written down over here, like a paragraph or a page or something that outlines, you know, what exactly a fair board is supposed to do, what their, what their authority is.
I think that, I had someone reach out to me last year or a year ago, in regards to fair boards, and, and I reached out to Josh. I think that the information, there's statute, there are state statutes that deal with fair boards. And then, I believe, it also goes through the Extension Office through K-State. I think that, those were the two areas he directed me where, because what I didn't realize was, is that there's the fair and then there's the carnival part, that those things kind of are separate. I didn't understand that part. And so, as we, the person was asking me a bunch of questions and I was like, let me just legally, what's this look like? So, that's, I'll, I can ask Josh, because he sent me a couple things, some links, and it brought up the statutes that just talked about the fair boards.
And Josh is?
Josh is our legal counsel, I'm sorry. Yeah, he's not here. He's, that's his empty chair. I can reach out to him, but I think if you also reach out to the K-State, I want to say Extension Office, but I can't remember that.
That would be more on the 4-H.
That would be the 4-H side. So, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so for reasons, all, all these things are coming together. And so, I just, I would like to have like, before we really get going, I'd like to have like, this is what we do, this is what this, the city does, you know, we're on city property.
Well, and I think the statutes talked about the fair board and how it runs and how often people need to come on the board and go off the board. I mean, I think there was some information about that also. I can't remember if it, if it had the rest of the details of all their responsibilities that are covered. But I'll, I can send him an email and ask if he can, what's your email?
J as a Jim, PPS1263@hotmail.com.
Alright, that was live and now everybody.
Yep, now everyone knows, sorry. Okay, so statutes for fair board.
Bring on the junk mail.
And responsibilities, okay.
Well, you know, we had an okay fair. I would have liked to have sold about 300 more tickets, carnival tickets.
Well, it looked like it was amazing compared to. I mean, COVID really destroyed a lot of things and it's coming back, it looks like.
Yeah, they're quality, they're quality carnival and we need to keep them. So, that's our goal is, there's going to be a lot more people involved in all of this going into next year. And so, I want to nail all this stuff down.
Yeah.
So that I don't get somebody over here telling me, you can't do that.
Right.
So, that's, that's the main reason I came in. And also, you know, if you have any questions for me?
Not right now, but I do imagine there's got to be some type of guiding document somewhere. I've never actually had that question.
Yeah, there are. I just know a year ago, someone reached out to me about, because they want to know if the commission had any authority over the fair board. And I'm like, I don't think so. There is one small little issue that the commission sometimes can be involved in, but really, the fair board is its own entity.
Yeah, it, and that's, I heard the same thing. And I thought, that almost sounds like we're autonomous. I'm like, no one controls this.
I've never thought about it, but yeah.
Well, there's state, there's state statutes.
Statute statutes would be the ones that would be the controlling entity over us.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're not going to build a lot of crazy ones, or do crazy things, but, you know, we want to have, be able to have the authority to, to run the fair and not have anyone, you know, trying to interfere with it. And I know we're on city property too, and, you know, we have to use, you know, community building and the other rag building, we have to use their kind of, use their facilities. So, but yeah, it's probably not a bad idea for us to check in with you every once in a while, kind of, you know, what we're doing.
Stay in the loop.
Alright, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you, thank you.
We'll try to send him out an email a little bit later.
So, I just need to remember Josh, and then state statutes, state statutes.
I would reach out to the K-State Extension Office and ask them, I'm pretty sure that was kind of the, I want to say governing, that could be wrong.
If it's a 4-H fair, yeah, definitely.
I'm just pulling from a year ago's information, that's. That's just the little tidbits I'm remembering.
All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Have a good one.
All right, Kevin, with Kevin Coley, Noxious Weed. You can give free advice on army worms while you're here.
Yes, for purchase order, get some more chemicals. Pretty good run on chemicals here this last time.
Meaning people are purchasing them, or what do you mean?
Yes. Oh, sorry, whoops. Love people who control this, but he's, that's, I started doing a big thing right now. As far as the army worms.
Not accounting responsibility.
The Noxious Weed Department does not sell chemicals for army worms. Also, cannot use my sprayer to spray army worms. Get a lot of that. All the listeners.
We would love to, but not part of our.
You don't wanna run a bunch of insecticide through your herbicide?
No.
Yep. Do you have any questions on this?
No, that's.
Okay. Are you ready? I would move to approve purchase order number 4110 to Van Deest Supply Company for Noxious Weed chemicals with the purchase price of $31,974.25 to be paid from the fund Noxious Weed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. And the fund number and everything's on here for you, Tempest.
So, I've heard crazy stories of mixing up dish soap and water and putting that on your yard.
Well, that, what I read is that it shows that if you spray it, that it, they'll like come to the surface to where you can see them. I don't think that it actually takes care of them.
I don't know, I see plenty out there, I don't need.
Yeah, I'm so sad.
I just went to my yard last night, and I mean, they're all over the place.
Yeah, I, I'm avoiding looking. Once I saw two yesterday, I just went inside. I was like.
They're, it's like an army, I mean, that's why they, they're everywhere, which is not looking.
And if you, you know, if you just see if they have patches something out, somebody's yard or pasture or something. But right now, it's probably the worst.
Yeah.
Broom, they get into the broom field.
Yeah, it'll kill a whole broom field.
Yeah.
Whether it's first cut or second cut or whatever, it's gone.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Colleen, if you're listening, you will be next. We have one short item before you.
Commissioner.
Yes, I'm gonna do the resolution when she's ready. So, when she's ready, well.
Whenever you get the chance, or.
We can go for a short recess.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for not just walking out.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Did your helper get back to work yet?
Part-timer, no, yeah. That's why I had to go make the water this morning. I didn't have any coverage.
Sorry, I'm texting Josh real quick. Okay, so the Paycor resolution, this is the exact same thing we did for ADP. So, we can do that today. Do you have resolution number?
Um, 2025-21.
2025-21. And do you have any questions on this? It's basically the exact same as the ADP.
No, we're, the intent is to overlap that, right?
Yeah, and so what it does is it, this is what Josh then sends to Paycor and then that lets them know who's the administrative access. And then that way, they can give us whatever they're needing us to make decisions on and information that we're needing, and then they can contact, you know, reach out to us or contact us and vice versa.
Very good.
So, so I would move to approve resolution 2025-21, a resolution regarding authorized administrators for the county payroll system. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners has contracted with Paycor to provide payroll processing services.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. So, there's this, I don't know what the, I believe that gets published in the paper. And then.
No, short recess, right?
Yes, we're going to recess. It is 9:55, five minutes. We'll be right back.
Thank you.
Roberts, for a matter of forty-five minutes, returning at ten forty-five, under the exception of financial affairs, with the topic of Osage County.
Promotion.
Promotion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, no action taken in executive session. We have Economic Development Director Colleen Mendoza with a couple items. It says Osage County Tourism.
Correct. So it is that time of year where we are needing to sign up for the Kansas Travel Guide. And as a reminder for 2026 travelers all across the state, due to the legislature cuts, this is the only tool that we will have to reach what is usually 350,000 eyes are put on this guide. It's different in 2026 because we have 650,000 people coming for the World's...
Is that also digital form? So if people Google stuff, then digitally it pops up?
Yep, it's both hard copy and on digital. So this year, different than any of our other years, I am proposing that we take out a half a page ad in this guide so that people can find us, as well as all of our assets are listed in the back and then also highlighted, our lakes, our libraries. This is, as we know, advertising is not inexpensive.
I'm sorry.
And here's a copy if you'd like to see an example. And so this year, what I tried to do was take advantage of their early bird cost, which is for a half a page ad is $3,982. If we wouldn't have taken advantage of the early bird, it would be $4,200. So my proposal today is for a half a page ad to promote Osage County and each one of our Osage County communities in this travel guide. That will be good for a year.
Do we get hard copies of it?
Oh, yes, yeah, the copies are free.
Free. Thirty nine hundred dollars.
So can we get a free hat for buying a tractor?
Right, exactly.
I just like the idea that it's digital now also. I mean, you see these at all the travel stops and when we travel, I was one of those people that we would always, I would always grab stuff wherever I was. But now when you're traveling, you're always...
Absolutely.
You know, like where's your local trailer? Where's your local eateries?
Right, right. So I have a PO for Signature today.
Does the county still do a hard copy like this?
They do, they do. It is...
The paper does.
I apologize, I don't have it with me, but I do have it in my office. The last, the one that they're doing now is will hold for two years, so 2025 and 2026.
But that's the one the paper does.
Yeah.
Right.
It's for the county, but the paper's the one that...
Right, yeah, I was just, I hadn't seen it in a while. I mean, it used to be a topic of discussion with the city, so I didn't know.
Oh, is that right? Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if it was still in circulation or not.
It is, I got 300 of them in my office right now. Because if you recall, we have the Santa Fe Trail Symposium that's coming up in September, and we will be including our Osage County guide, as well as some other Osage County promotion, so that every one of those people can learn more about Osage County, and hopefully they will come back and visit.
Do you have any questions?
No, no ma'am.
Okay, are you ready? I would move to approve purchase order number 4097 to the Kansas Travel Guide. Is that who it's to?
I think I listed...
Well, you described what it is, but who is it to?
Right below it is for mammoth...
Oh, I'm sorry, it's right in front of my face. I'm gonna start that over. So I move to approve number, purchase order number 4097 paid to Meredith Corporation, which is a half-page ad in the Kansas Travel Guide for 2026, the amount of $3,982, paid out of the Economic Development Fund 001-275200.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion passes. You already signed it?
Same thing.
Did she, did you hand, did he, she handed it to you?
You handed it to me.
You're efficient.
To look at, I didn't...
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners, I appreciate you supporting our promotion of our communities.
Would you...
Okay, no action taken in executive session. We have Economic Development Director Colleen Mendoza with a couple items. It says Osage County Tourism.
Correct. So it is that time of year where we are needing to sign up for the Kansas Travel Guide. And as a reminder, for 2020, simple travelers all across the state. Due to the legislature cuts, this is the only tool that we will have to reach what is usually 350,000 eyes are put on this guide. It's different in 2026 because we have 650,000 people coming for the world's
Is that also digital form? So if people Google stuff, then digitally it pops up?
Yep, it's both hard copy and on digital. So this year, different than any of our other years, I am proposing that we take out a half a page ad in this guide so that people can find us, as well as all of our assets are listed in the back and then also highlighted, our lakes, our libraries. This is, as we know, advertising is not inexpensive.
I'm sorry.
And here's a, here's a copy if you'd like to see an example. And so this year, what I tried to do was take advantage of their early bird cost, which is for a half a page ad is $3,982. If we wouldn't have taken advantage of the early bird, it would be $4,200. So my proposal today is for a half a page ad to promote Osage County and each one of our Osage County communities in this travel guide. For, that will be good for a year.
Do we get hard copies of it?
Oh, yes, yeah, the copies are free.
Okay.
Yeah.
Free. Thirty-nine hundred dollars.
Like when you get a free hat for buying a tractor?
Right, exactly.
I just like the idea that it's digital now also. Because, I mean, you see these at all the travel stops and when we travel, I was one of those people that we would always, I would always grab stuff wherever I'm at. But now when you're traveling, you're always, you know, like where's your local trailer? Where's your local eateries?
Right, right.
And it pops up.
So I have a P O for signature today.
Does the county still do a hard copy like this?
They do, they do. It is, I apologize, I don't have it with me, but I do have it in my office. We, the last, the one that they're doing now is, will hold for two years. So 2025 and 2026.
But that's the one the paper does.
Yeah.
Right.
It, it's for the county, but the paper's the one that...
Right, yeah, I was just, I hadn't seen it in a while. I mean, it used to be a topic of discussion with the city, so I didn't know.
Oh, is that right? Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if it was still in circulation or not.
It is, I got 300 of them in my office right now. Because if you recall, we have the Santa Fe Trail Symposium that's coming up in September. And we will be including our Osage County guide, as well as some other Osage County promotion in, so that every one of those people can learn more about Osage County. And hopefully, they will come back and visit.
Do you have any questions?
No, no ma'am.
Okay, are you ready? I would move to approve purchase order number 4097 to the Kansas Travel Guide. Is that who it's to?
I think I listed.
Well, you described what it is, but who is it to?
Oh, right below it is for me.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's right in front of my face. I'm gonna start that over. So I'd move to approve number, purchase order number 4097 paid to Meredith Corporation, which is a half-page ad in the Kansas Travel, Travel Guide for 2026. The amount of $3,982, paid out of the Economic Development Fund 001-275200.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion passes. You already signed it?
Same thing.
Did she, did you hand, did he, she handed it to you?
You handed it to me.
You're efficient.
To look at, I didn't.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners. Appreciate you supporting our promotion of our communities.
Would you, do you need, do you need this back?
I do not.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, you're welcome to keep it. On my second order of business today is, we have been selected, Osage County has been selected to be featured in Business View Magazine. This is a business magazine that is a global leader in multi-platform business-to-business profiles, news, and opinion. They have nearly 900,000 subscribers across North America. And they are planning on featuring a few small rural communities that, and the topics that they plan to focus on are being open for business and identifying some of our recent accomplishments, our builds, developments, or investments. And then also identifying basically where we might need monies or focus on future. An example is, this is a perk city example, I'm just gonna pass this to you folks. It will be an eight to 10-page feature on the county. The foreword in the magazine will be from the Kansas Association of Counties, the Kansas City County Management Association, and the League of Municipalities will be in the foreword of the magazine. In order to participate, it's gonna come fast and furious, we would have an interview with their Business Views editor, basically talking about our county and emphasizing the things that we'd like to have highlighted. One of the things that comes along with this opportunity is, they would like to have a letter from the community chairman that basically communicates to our top, maybe vendors or suppliers, and invites them to take out an ad in this magazine where we're featured. So all we would do is basically say that, essentially that we're planning to be featured, we'd like to invite you to have an ad if you'd like, and we encourage you to, you know, take out an ad, and they give a contact. Here is an example of Garrett County, a letter that the Commissioner signed. And here are some examples of where they have featured Andover, Kansas, or Beloit, or Latha, Great Bend, Augusta.
Would the, would the, would the individual ads be part of the, like the...
It would go in the magazine somewhere.
Just somewhere, okay.
Yeah, however you see, kind of, I don't know if you see any dispersed in those pages.
I didn't know if it would be like, you know, stuck with it, or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, let me just see exactly. I think they must be around the article, like there's eight or 10 pages around the
There were some gaps, like on some of the pages, there was some gaps?
Yeah, that maybe they...
Yeah, I was looking for the ads in there to see.
Yeah, I don't have that here.
That's alright.
So what we would need to do is pull together a letter like that and basically ask permission, if Chairman Holman could sign it. He has provided me with an electronic signature if we are agreeable. And then they will take care of sending this out to the suppliers.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, is how does that get out to them?
Yeah, and then they would like to have, thank you very much, they would like to have an interview, like a 30-minute interview, so it'll go fast, next Monday.
With you?
With whomever we'd like, not more than probably three or four people. I am open to your folks' suggestions. I think that we should have a board of commission member, at least one. I thought about Sheriff Wells, because he can talk about the jail, or the law enforcement center. And I'm open to any other suggestions on, do you guys recommend Quentin would be a great one?
Well, that's, my question was, do we know what the questions are gonna be centered around, because that would help you know who would be best to be there. Is it just about Osage County, or, or do we need cities represented, or?
It is primarily about the county, but within that, we'd like to highlight, I'd like to touch on, you know, like great things happening in each one of those communities. We don't, we are not gonna have time to have six people there. But we would go in, I think, with an outline, we can pretty much shape what that looks like.
I do think Quentin probably is a great resource.
Would be a great one, yeah.
With his knowledge.
Yeah, so that would be one of the commission members, myself, Sheriff Wells, and Quentin, I think would be a pretty good group. If you guys have any other suggestions, I'm open to the... Okay, alright, so I'll try to, do I have a volunteer from the Commissioners?
I do think Les would probably be the best candidate for that. But I cannot speak for him.
Okay.
So you could reach out to him and see if he'd be available.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a legal term, it's called railroaded, we just railroaded.
No, Brandon, you speak professionally, and I think that Les would be the best candidate, suited for the opportunity.
I see, I see.
We will try to do that, and, you know, it'll be a Zoom call anyway, so hopefully you can accommodate it. Okay, and I don't have anything to sign today, I've gotta put, basically, the letter will be drafted off of the...
So you don't need any action from us right now?
Uh, just, I believe, just permission.
Consensus approval.
Yeah, to have him sign it.
Okay, so I need to know what, if I make the motion to approve him?
I'd just do a consensus.
You make the motion then, I don't.
Or if you'd like, here's a letter that I have from Ecodivo, this would basically be the letter, we would add Les's signature.
Yeah, 'cause we made the motion on the actual part that's gonna cost the money or whatever, and so, I mean, we made the motion on that part. So I would say we just make a consensus among the Commissioners to have Les sign a, Sign in, okay. A letter supporter, or what do you call that?
Yeah, that's, it's...
Yeah, a letter of promotion, maybe?
So by...
So a letter of promotion.
Yeah, by consensus, I would say, yeah, thumbs up on my end.
To be featured in the business, is that what you...
Yes, the Business View Magazine.
Yeah. So, yeah, you've got my thumbs up, my consensus thumbs up.
So I guess the motion would be that I would move to approve that we allow Chairman Holman to electronically sign a letter for promotion for Osage County to be featured in the Business View Magazine.
Excellent.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you very much. And then the other part of this would be, I will probably reach out to some of the department heads to understand who our key suppliers are, because I don't have all of that information at my fingertips, and of course, I'll reach out to the clerk's office as well.
Okay.
Thank you so much, that's all I have.
You are welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's everything on our agenda. Brandon, do you have anything else?
Uh, do not, Heather.
And Tempest, do you have anything else? And do you have any questions for us of things we've discussed that maybe we talked too fast on?
I do not.
Okay. So then I guess last order of business, I'd need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, you wanna, okay, so moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, meeting is adjourned.
I didn't know if you really wanted to leave.